My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Jennings.
Here.
Voight.
President.
Zuber.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Farnum.
Here.
Helsley.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, public session. Any comments?
January 28th, 2013, Craig Smith sends a letter to IDOT on behalf of Chris Patrick. IDOT ignored that letter. February 11th, Craig Smith sends a second letter to IDOT. That letter was ignored. February 19th, Craig Smith sends a third letter to IDOT. The two, the 11th and the 19th, you should have copies in front of you. In this letter, Craig Smith claims IDOT's statements have created a riotous situation in Edgar County. Most would argue that the riotous situation Mr. Smith refers to was in fact a result of Mr. Patrick's actions, not those of IDOT. More disturbing in this letter is Mr. Smith makes demands of IDOT, which he insists they rescind their prior statements. Who is Craig Smith to demand anything from IDOT? To the best of my knowledge, this letter has also been ignored. I have asked for subsequent letters sent or responded to since the February 19th letter. Yesterday at 10:16, I received this comment back from IDOT in response as to why the letters from the 11th and the 19th were not provided in my original FOIA. "Mr. Allen, I have your FOIA request and once again apologize that you were not earlier furnished the letters in question. Apparently, an email you sent on April 2nd to Scott Lackey, Chris Greason, et cetera prompted a review of your previous response and it was then discovered the letters had inadvertently been omitted. Mr. Patrick, you claimed four letters have been sent. We now have three of those. We will wait to see if there is in fact a fourth. I had requested to claim four letters from Mr. Patrick and he informed me via Mr. Griffin in a FOIA request, he does not have copies. Mr. Patrick, would it have been that difficult to ask Craig Smith to provide the copies so that the rest of this board as well as the public was informed as to what was going on? No, you didn't have copies, but your attorney did." More word games. "March 6th, 2012, 36 days ago, Mr. Lawson sent an email to IDOT. Assuming the situation remains unchanged, will the district honor a resolution appointing the vice chair's signature authority to sign the LA and Fed agreements next month? IDOT's response the very next day, 'I have spoken with Joe Crowe, Deputy Director of Highways, Region 3 Engineer. At this time, the district has put a hold on approving all agreements and plans that include federal or state funds until the county states attorney has met with the department's office of chief counsel to address the conflict of interest.' So here we are today. We're going to move on a resolution that has already been offered as a solution and by all indications was denied. I'd like every board member to think long and hard about voting in support of a resolution to authorize the vice chairman to sign agreements for the chairman. Such an action is an admission that you recognize that there is in fact a conflict. Otherwise, there's no reason to take this action. Voting to allow such an action is allowing Mr. Patrick to ignore the very duties he was elected to perform as well as appointed by this very board to perform. Members of this board excluding Mr. Zuber and Mr. Patrick, Mr. Zuber, I believe you were gone during this particular meeting, you all have verbally acknowledged that a conflict exists and most have stated Mr. Patrick should resign. I ask that you men think long and hard before passing that resolution which would clearly facilitate Mr. Patrick's conflict and tells the people that put you in office, you condone it. As far as the second resolution you wish to pass, I would encourage you read 605 ILCS 5/205. It outlines that the county superintendent of highways is under the supervision of the county board. This resolution you're contemplating would restrict all county board members except the chairman of the board, or chairman of the road and bridge and motor fuel committees from performing their statutorily given duties. In other words, it takes the authority of elected public officials, the authority that is given to them by statute. Who gave you the authority to take an elected official's rights away? Mr. Patrick, allowing someone else to perform your duly elected duties, I believe is official misconduct. That is defined as intentionally failing to perform any mandatory duty as required by law. You clearly are placing your personal business interests ahead of your elected duties and the mere fact these resolutions are even being considered supports that fact. You've put money in your own pocket at the airport while in charge. You've opened a bank account that's a bit secret from the county and did so with county tax ID number. You've refused to provide the information on the CD which you took action to place your name on as well as the name of Jimmy Wells. Your actions make it clear you cannot be trusted. No other member of this board had to sign any recusal letter to have a resolution created to get around a conflict of interest, so why would you support such an action for Chris Patrick? Do you not see the message you are sending to the people of this county if you support these resolutions? I ask that the men of integrity send the message to Mr. Patrick as well as the rest of the county that we are done with lawlessness and twisting of our laws. Please do not support these resolutions."
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we will move forward. Next item on the agenda. Number five, the Board of General Vice Chair to execute all IDOT required documents and so on. Mr. Griffin, will you? This is the resolution of that. Can you read that for me?
Okay. Whereas the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, controls distribution of funds for local projects involving airport, road bridge maintenance and construction improvements. And whereas IDOT has expressed concern over the potential for a conflict of interest involving duly elected county board member Chris Patrick, appointed by the county board as chairman, who is the sole concrete supplier in Edgar County. And whereas IDOT, the Edgar County Board, and the chairman of the county board seek to protect taxpayer funds and to avoid the potential for a conflict of interest. And whereas the Edgar County Board, IDOT, and the chairman of the county board agree that the chairman will not make any decisions nor participate in any vote nor participate in the award or execution relative to any airport, highway, or local road construction or maintenance contract that is or will be financed in whole or in part with state or federal funds. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Edgar County Board authorizes its vice chairman to execute any and all necessary documents on behalf of the Edgar County Board relative to local road, bridge, and airport maintenance and construction contracts for the duration of Mr. Patrick's tenure as chairman of the Edgar County Board.
Any questions?
Yes. Why can't you sign the contracts? I mean, why are we having Jennings sign them?
This is what the IDOT wants? They requested?
Why did they request? Normally, a chairman signs all of these contracts.
Under the circumstances, what IDOT wants?
And I have a lot of things I'd like to ask with Mark, but for some reason, he's not here. One would be if this resolution passes, will this guarantee that road projects will be funded by the state? I think that he said at the last meeting that no matter what we decide, the state controls the first strings. Therefore, I mean, that may not get funding anyway. But that true of the statement he made?
Yes.
If the resolution doesn't pass, does this mean that none of our road projects will be funded?
The email that you were given.
Yeah, I read the one that said it's on 4/19. It's when they're supposed to make a definite decision from Springfield on the reclusive letter that you're supposed to send back again.
Yes.
So basically, if we pass this resolution, it would have been signed, and you haven't filled out the reclusive letter, then that just mean everything we're doing today, it doesn't count?
The recusal letter will be sent, yeah.
Yes, so why are we doing this now?
Because it's what IDOT has to do. It's what IDOT asked us to do.
Is that right? I thought the state's attorney said that it might be a good gesture of us to pass this. I wasn't sure based on what you told us, Carl, that that's what he said. Is that what the state's attorney said?
Roundabout way, yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, everything.
This is what I think. I wish he was here.
Yeah, I do too. I don't know what we're doing.
Why couldn't we have a meeting when he could be here?
He was aware that we were having a meeting at one.
He's at Seminole.
Yeah, but why couldn't we have a meeting next Monday? It's not when he could be here. We would ask the questions.
Look, because we don't have time to have it on the agenda for the meeting Wednesday.
This is what him and the, I assume, the general counsel who he's talked to, you know, they've been emailing back and forth. This is what they come up with to resolve this situation.
As of yesterday, it does resolve the situation, yes.
And it sounds to me like, and then Chris will send this recusal letter, you know, they just got that, I don't know, today or?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And that would be the, hopefully, the final thing to make it all work.
Carl, did you not tell me that even if we do that, it's no guarantee that they're going to release the funds? That's what you said?
There was a little question. Yeah, that's what he said. Possibly.
Who said?
That's what Mark said. He said three of the four things have been resolved, and I assume that what he was talking about, the recusal letter was the last thing that needed to be sent to finalize it. That's, I mean, we didn't go into detail on it, but that's what he told me, yes.
Well, basically, this is a quick fix for something that may go on for another year and a half.
I don't think so. It can't go on. I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
If this doesn't work, then the projects that he's got for later this month will stop. Yeah. And then if.
The really only way this could be resolved for Chris is that then?
No. Not if you want.
That's the way I look at it.
That's not the indication I get from the state's attorney that what he has talked with the people in Springfield.
Do you have any discussion, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with what we're trying to do here. I'm looking at the long haul versus the short haul. The citizens are viewing our actions right now rather carefully. And I think they're not impressed, at the very least. We've got issues that we have to deal with over the next couple of years, jail, a budget deficit that we inherited. And we're going to need the cooperation and understanding of the citizens of this county. And we seem to be going a long way around the barn and putting individuals instead of, in front of the people. And I have a problem with what we're doing in general. I see it that, rather simply, but I'm pretty simple. A person, if they have a conflict, the best way to deal with it is either not to do the conflict or remove themselves from the issue of the conflict. The taxpayers are sitting there and our citizens, they are, no matter what, got a 50-50 chance right now, or less, or more, depending on how you look at it, of losing some economic support for needed infrastructure, for needed projects and jobs. And either way it goes, probably, you're going to sell concrete. You're not taking a chance either way. And I just think we're in a position that we shouldn't be in. And I wish we had other alternatives.
Any other comments?
Am I reading this last email correctly from whoever, yeah, was Lance T. Jones's deputy chief counsel? If I read that, it says, "Everything is fine except the recusal letter. My 18th email provided that the department would find acceptable for a recusal letter. Provide a new recusal letter on the county board letterhead stating, 'In my capacity as Edgar County Board Chairman, I recuse myself for making any decisions, participating in any vote, or participating in the award or execution relative to any airport, highway, or local road construction or maintenance contract that is or will be financed in whole or in part with state or federal funds.'" And that's the same thing as exactly says, or am I reading this incorrectly, in this resolution, it says the fourth whereas, so to speak. Whereas the Edgar County Board IDOT Chairman, agreed the chairman will not make any decisions nor participate in any vote nor participate in the award or execution relative to any airport, highway, or local road construction or maintenance contracts that is financed whole or in part with state or federal funds. Am I missing any words in that, or is that the same thing?
It's the same thing. They did receive a second recusal letter that they denied. They want to go back to the first, and they want it on county letterhead. Those are the differences.
I guess I was just looking, because I understand your concerns, but if I'm looking at this correctly, we are also doing, as far as what, if I understand, that's kind of what you're saying, Carl. I could be way off base from everybody here. It looks like we're trying to do what they said is going to be acceptable. Because there are different times, and most, I would think, positions, and maybe even in the general assembly, I'm not sure that Speaker of the House or even the president of the senate would agree or really would feel comfortable voting on everything, nor do they. But all our county board chairman or vice chairman, really, in essence, is saying is that the county board agreed to extend the contract. I'm not, I mean, even like the Speaker of the House, even Mike Madigan, he won't vote on certain things, and he will not sign his name in certain things. But what he'll do is have the, whoever the assistant is or the vice president of the senate, they sign those things, if I remember correctly. So that's what I'm, I was asking, I'll give you this the other day, if we already have someplace in policy that, as I've talked to different people around, a lot, or I shouldn't say a lot, I know a couple of municipalities, counties, et cetera, they already have it on file. If the chairman or the president or whoever they're going to call themselves don't want to sign something or don't feel like they could or should, especially as a non-voting part, that automatically goes to their vice president or vice chairman or whatever. But all of you said, you're not sure that we actually have that in policy and is not. Because there's a side of me that says, I don't make sure.
I don't know whether we can do it according to the rules, to the law that we operate under.
Well, see, and I'm wondering if we already have it in place, Jeff. I mean, it may be the opposite side of what you're saying, just by the fact that we have a vice chairman. I mean, this is what I think, this is set up so that we.
This is what I thought, my understanding, this is what IDOT wanted.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
This is what they want, and this is what the state's attorney and IDOT legal has worked out.
And that's what I want to make sure.
And that's what we've been waiting on.
But my understanding that 12 o'clock yesterday, when you come down from talking to the state's attorney, he said this still didn't guarantee we're going to get the funds.
Look at the date. Look at the time on that email.
Because he said three of the four issues have been resolved. He didn't say which one wasn't.
That's 5:30. 5:39 now.
What's today's date?
The 12th. So this was yesterday, late afternoon.
So this is the.
It precedes that. This supersedes what's.
This says there's still, there's supposed to be a final federal joint agreement that's due in Springfield on 4/19. This will be executed local side, 4/17, up at county board's approval for proposed resolution authorizing execution by the board's vice chairman.
That has to do with the road agreement.
Right. So in other words, it's still a few days away.
Is there a conflict of interest? It doesn't say anything about conflict of interest. It said potential for conflict of interest. I don't think somebody, some people will side with that. This is just a potential. This doesn't mean we've got one yet.
I wonder, I guess, if you can. That's the road agreement we're going to sign next week, isn't it?
On the lower T. Is that the federal joint agreement? Pardon?
I'm not sure what's working at all. That's the hottest one. The deadline's tonight.
You're going to take it. Yeah, I'll listen to that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mike. Is there a second? Second by Ben. Roll call.
Which one is it?
Not the first one. The one he read, number, what's the item on the agenda?
To the vice chairman.
Number five on the agenda. Roll call. Jennings.
Yes.
Voight.
No.
Zuber.
Yes.
Brunner.
No.
Farnum.
Yes.
Helsley.
Yes.
Item number six on the agenda, safe resolution. Okay, next one, the second one reads, "Whereas the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, controls distribution of funds for local projects involving road, bridge, and airport maintenance and construction improvements. And whereas IDOT has expressed concern over the potential for a conflict of interest involving duly elected county board member Chris Patrick, appointed by the county board as chairman, who is the sole concrete supplier in Edgar County. And whereas IDOT, the Edgar County Board, and the chairman of the county board seek to protect taxpayer funds and to avoid the potential for a conflict of interest. And whereas the Edgar County engineer is responsible for the oversight of local road and bridge maintenance and construction improvements. And whereas the Edgar County engineer is responsible for the oversight of federal and state funds received in Edgar County for local road and bridge maintenance and construction improvements. Be it hereby resolved that the Edgar County engineer shall report, seek guidance from, and make recommendations to the Road and Bridge Committee and the Motor Fuel Tax Committee, both of which are standing committees of the Edgar County Board." Any questions or comments on that?
So what does this actually mean? Does this mean that Aaron will come to me or Ben and explain the project that we bring to the board?
It didn't say chairman.
Committee. It comes to be to the Road and Bridge Committee and the Motor Fuel Tax Committee. It says not chairman of them.
Is there anybody on here that's not a member of at least one of those committees?
Chris Patrick.
I don't see what problem it is.
You know, Carl wasn't, but I thought they put him on.
I didn't know that happened.
I don't know that it's, oh, I thought we, I don't know, but.
That'll be, that'll be reported to you at the study session. Any other comments or questions?
Make that motion.
Motion by Carl. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alan. Roll call. Jennings.
Yes.
Voight.
Yes.
Zuber.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Helsley.
Yes.
I move with Jared.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Brunner. Don't think so.
Aye.
Same side, motion carried. We are in, thank you. Okay, now we need, hey, if you made the motion, you need to sign these.
Not much, is it, Derek? Okay.
Second, Brad.
It's Friday, so we're going to do all of them. Now, I'm asking, well, now that this is over, and we know the results of this meeting.
I've got a precept, because it's supposed to be.
But you were a kid, they told you that this is true. How are we going to do all of them?
I know, you're playing the original game.
Our concern was one, two, five, and six. One, two, five, six. It's my wife. I mean, they. It's supposed to start June.
I don't want to use time one.
I don't think I want to wait until last. We're supposed to start this, that we had the remarks ready on. Do you want to call? I've already got them on. I've got them on. And then you don't want someone to table seven through 15, it's going to take a long time. That's my suggestion. My suggestion is for someone to make a motion, someone second. Maybe six, or whatever.
We've got Zuber's cell phone. He needs to be here for signing.
I've got time.
He has to sign the most thing.
I wouldn't have a special meeting. Then he wants a special meeting. So the rest is.
Just do them all on the meeting now.
Okay, it's going to be a long meeting.
The other one says it's.
It does.
Excuse me, we don't do that.
Okay. It's more than a session. Cheating my mouth shut, he hasn't called me. No, no. You're going to call, and I'm sure you are. No, we'll talk about it Monday, and hopefully, there will be any questions. Are you going to start reading the county stuff?
Yeah, Alan, if you're gone, we still need your signature, so.
When we start doing county board meeting?
I'm sorry, I hope I didn't catch you, but I tried to give you a call, but you stopped because you've got to sign some resolution.
I'm not being honorary at all.
We'll work through that.
He's always going to work through that. So I imagine I'll get all kinds of questions, quite whether or not you're participating. Would you not agree?
Do you think, you guys, you don't got to get back to me?
All right, so.
You signed it.
I did. I signed it already. I'm starting to figure this out. And Mike, two months ago, you made.
He's already gone. He'd already seen.
Definitely a conflict. You have a conflict now?
I didn't know what I was doing.
I didn't ask if you knew what you were doing.
Well, I'm telling you I didn't.
That doesn't answer the question. It's not your job.
What is his job?
He doesn't know. To be a guest man.
Thank you.
That's it. I'll let you.
I wonder what other county in the state involves this. I'll take a minute. This one. Just checking. If you want to. No? I didn't. Rookie character?
Both of them are hurt.
I hope this is resolved, proceed.
Sure you do. There's one through our files, and I don't have a photo of you. Or if I take a couple of quick ones right here.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Is this okay?
That's fine. We just need like, workshop, all the people on board.